We can get this show started.
Chairman, this is Brian Seacrest. I'm also here with the planning department if you need to ask me a question.
Okay, Brian, good to know you're here. Thank you. I'd like to call the September ZBA meeting to order. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Those of you that I can see and those that I can't, welcome to the September twenty twenty-two zoning board of appeals meeting. My name is Kelly Donovan. I'm the chair of this board. For those of you who've never attended one of our meetings, I'll quickly explain how the meeting is conducted. First, we'll ask the applicant to state their name and address for the record, discuss your proposed project or request for variance. And then we'll have some questions for you hopefully. The floor will then be open for anyone who would like to speak in favor or against the proposed project. That'll be any of our standby folks. I think we'll ask you to raise your hand or to call in and that number will be given. Once we get to that point, once everybody's had an opportunity to speak, the public hearing will be officially closed and no new testimony will be taken. After public hearings have been held, the board will deliberate, make a decision on each case. You're welcome to stay throughout the deliberations, but again, no public input is permitted. For those applicants who wish not to stay through deliberations, planning department staff will be available tomorrow with the board's decision. Zoning Board of Appeals is a five-member board. Tonight, we have, I think right now, we have four members present. Considering a quorum, I think we may have five by the time we're done here. So I will call the roll. Mr. Matso.
Present.
Mr. Landers.
Present.
Ms. Bucci.
Present.
Mr. Donovan is present. Is Ms. Resonetti here? I know, I know she had another appointment at four thirty and I think she'll try to be available as soon as she is done with that four thirty appointment, but four out of five constitutes a quorum and that is good. I did see we had some meetings minutes from last month. Did everybody get a chance to see those?
Yes.
I guess.
Okay, I did as well and I thought they looked good. Any, any corrections, comments or other?
I'd like to make a motion to approve last month's meeting.
All right, could I get a second please?
Second.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you very much. And we whizzed right through that. Our public hearing for our, one item on the case is scheduled for five twenty. Mr. Seacrest, we need a way to introduce the applicant until then, or can we talk to him right now?
Good, although. Yes, we probably should.
Wait, okay.
Yes, simply because the public was given notice that it starts in two minutes from now.
Absolutely.
But Tito, was there any other issues that we could address now in that two minutes?
Uh, just to, just to repeat what we mentioned in base camp that because of the two thirty-nine, you guys can't vote today, but the applicant's hoping to get feedback from the board and the public on the use variance today. So you would open the public hearing and leave it open and table the case.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. Did we get any comments from the public? Other, I mean, did we get any emails, letters, anything like that?
We did not.
Everything was posted for earlier, appropriate amount of time, correct?
What was that? I'm sorry.
All the, all the neighbors were notified. They got all the, all the postings were up and all that.
Yeah, and one thing we do want to mention is we had IT issues as you all may be aware. And so we had to change, we had to make changes to our servers here. And so our email address now for the department for people to submit public comment is planning@cityofbingerton.gov. It's no longer dot com.
Okay.
They submitted emails to dot com. They should have been forwarded to the dot gov address, but I just wanted to let everyone know going forward. All our email addresses here, including us as staff people are dot gov now.
Okay, that's good to know. I, I take it that's probably posted on the webpage somewhere?
Um, it may be.
Okay, all right, I see it's five twenty now, so we can now have our first case of the evening, which is Kearney Realty and Development Group for seventy-seven Pine Street. A use variance for the construction of a three-story multiple-unit dwelling with twelve units, nine-one bedroom and three-two bedroom in the R-two-one and two-unit dwelling district. I think I saw the, someone from Kearney here, if you could introduce yourself. Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is Ken Corning. Joined tonight by my son and partner Sean Corning and Dominic from CPL. I'd like to make a brief opening statement and then turn it over to, to Dom.
Great.
My son and I are developers that started in the Hudson Valley. About seven years ago, we developed the model. It became quite popular here in the Hudson Valley in, where we go into a downtown. Normally, there's a couple of vacant lots. This is an area that primarily has been lacking investment over years and an area that may be seeking more synergy, more foot traffic. So we started in Peak Skill, New York, with the Poughkeepsie, New York. I'm actually in Beacon, New York, in, in one of the units here that we did. We built a market rate building right adjacent to one of our mixed income units. What we're proposing here in Binghamton is similar to our model that we developed in the Hudson Valley. It's a combination of workforce housing. There's a preference for a number of units, fifty percent of the units for those involved in artistic or literary activities. And we also seek to use the mixed income model where we have, we have units at all different incomes. We build a lost-style apartment with high ceilings. We also build retail. Here we have five stores. Very similar to Peak Skill, we have five stores and we're emulating the concept whereby we'll have four retail stores for rent. The middle store will actually act as the lobby and a gallery for the building. So if you enter the building off of Henry Street, you will walk into an area that will also resemble an art gallery. We have one in Peak Skills worked out quite well. We have five stores, two on each side. The middle one is our, is our lobby and gallery. And if you go there, you'll see hanging on the wall various products of our, of our tenants who live upstairs. We are attracted to Beacon due to the stadium district plan, its location to the Morbidio Stadium. The three lots that have been assembled on Henry Avenue are not part of this application. The one lot that is fronts on Pine Street is before you tonight. We do not take this application lightly. We, we understand there's a lot of consideration given in regards to variances. We have received variances in the past on some of our other applications. We've worked with the neighbors in some of our other applications or other projects in the Hudson Valley. We have two projects that are currently under construction in upstate New York. One is in Oneonta, one is in Rome. And we hope to, we hope to break ground next year, possibly in Glover'sville as well. I'll let Dom talk more about the specifics of, of the, of the use variants. But I will say that we develop our own properties. We have our own construction company, but more importantly, we manage our own properties. And we feel very strongly that this project fits in with the, with the goals and the vision of the stadium district plan. And we also need, we have a, a model and our model, the units or unit count is always around the same, about sixty-four, sixty-five. And the Pine Street lot is part of that, part of that unit count. So at this time, at this time, I'll turn it over to Dom and I'll be available. We're available here to answer any questions that the board may have. Dom?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Ken. Yeah, just to elaborate a little bit more on the project and specifically the use variance piece that we're talking about tonight. So there's three contiguous, well, four contiguous properties, three along Henry and then one to the rear, which is actually a Pine Street address. The three Henry Street units are in the C-four commercial neighborhood district where the Pine Street parcel is in R-two residential two-unit, one and two-unit dwelling district. So eventually, the, and prior to construction, the, the four lots will be combined into one, but that zoning line will, will obviously remain. So the, the piece on the, if you're looking at Tito's screen here, to the bottom of the page, to the left, that, that kind of L extension, which would be to the south, left on your screen, is the Pine Street parcel. And basically what you're looking at is a one-two bedroom and three-one-bedroom units on each level. And on, on that, that piece of the building will be three levels. So in total, you have nine-one-bedroom units and three-two-bedroom units being constructed on Pine Street. So essentially, the, the use variance request is for a multi-unit dwelling in an R-two district.
Okay, that makes the request very, very clear, I, I think. Anything more you guys would like to let us know about before we have some questions for you?
There, there will, I should point out, there will be, we're still kind of fine-tuning the plans and the surveys have come in subsequent to our initial submission here. So as we fine-tune the plans, we'll, we'll know exactly what we're submitting on, but there will be a handful of other area variances, probably rear yard setback. Things like that. I think the, the building height we might be just to touch over on in order to get the high ceilings. You know, things, things, things of that nature will be submitting on separately. We wanted to get this use variance in the queue.
Right.
We see it's a big piece of the puzzle, so.
So to be, to be very exact here, the area we're talking about is just seventy-seven Pine Street. It's the left half of that little L section?
It's that entire, you, you can kind of see the rough property lines on that, on Tito's screen. So it's that entire parcel of the, the dash, the dash lines that cut through the.
It's that segment to the lower left.
Correct.
Yep, and not, not anything beyond the middle of the page.
Correct.
Okay. Everybody got that?
Got it.
All right. Members of the, of the board, do you guys have any questions for the applicant? I, I'm gonna start with the first one. In the staff report, I'm looking at picture that it says, I believe it says, it's a picture of seventy-seven. Is seventy-seven Pine, is seventy-seven Pine still, is that a vacant lot?
It is. It's actually currently being used as kind of a, as a staging area for the fire department construction across the street.
Okay, just. All right, members of the board, any questions? Feel free to ask away.
I have two questions. Can you give me a ballpark of what we, your expected rent will be?
Sure. Our rents are, our rents are pegged at thirty percent of the county area meeting, meeting incomes. We, we will have some rents as low as five hundred and fifty dollars and then we'll have rents at six hundred, seven hundred. And maybe some mixed income with the higher income levels as high as, you know, eight hundred, eight fifty or so.
Okay. Then my other question, I think is just a clerical thing. On page six of ten, it says, is the site within the boundaries of the local waterfront revitalization program? It's checked, yes. Is that correct?
It is, yeah, it is in the, the old boundary, but that, that board, I, I actually asked Tito this question. That board's kind of been dissolved, correct, Tito?
That, that's correct. It, the Waterfront Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission are one and the same, so.
Okay.
That doesn't change the process.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members?
I have a question. Where is parking for this housing?
So in, in addition to the four contiguous parcels, we, we just talked about the, the part of the purchase from the city is, is also two disconnected parcels. One is Henry Street, I'll give you the address. It's eighty, I'm sorry, one eighty-eight. Thought I had my, I think I accidentally closed my parcel map. Or give me one second. So right on Henry Street, across Chapman, it is one sixty-two Henry Street as part of the cell. So that'll be used for parking and then two twenty-nine Court Street, which is adjacent, on, on the corner of Chapman and Court, as you get off the Brandywine, immediately adjacent to the Marabital gas station there. So it's the corner on Court and Chapman.
All right, thank you.
If, if I could add, when we did our first project in Peak Skill, very similar, it was two lots right on Main Street in Peak Skill in an area that the people were right down from City Hall and people weren't walking on the sidewalk and kind of crossing the street every time they, they wanted to get down the street. We didn't have one, one parking spot on site. And it was a process with the city of, of trying to come up with a solution. And what we did, Sean and I agreed, there were two underutilized parking garages within walking distance of the project. And so we agreed to rent some, some spaces in these garages. But what we didn't realize was the impact on the foot traffic, that having tenants park two or three blocks away and having to walk to their cars, you know, in the morning and at night and so forth on the weekends. It really, it, it created more foot traffic on the sidewalk that the area didn't have before. And it, it's been a very, very positive, impactful byproduct of, of our project. And so we, we feel that these, these two lots will hopefully have the same impact that, or the same result we had down at Peak Skill.
Yeah, parking is a very sensitive topic in, in Binghamton and it's good to know that you have, have thought of some solutions in the nearby area. It's not always thought about clearly upfront. So we appreciate that.
We, we may or may not, that may or may not be an area variance we're requesting. I'm, I'm not sure if we'll be within the permissible levels for reduction of parking requirement allowed by the planning commission. We, we still have to vet that all out, so.
Well, you're getting the process started, which is taking that, taking those steps. Any other questions, members of the board?
Good.
Okay. All right. Let's see, we, we do not have the feedback from the county yet. And excuse me for not being Tito, was Planning Commission gonna be lead or we, I'm assuming we're gonna be lead on Seeker?
You'll be lead agency for Seeker for the variances. We're doing uncoordinated review, so you guys will do yours and planning commission will do theirs.
Okay. Now, I'm, I'm kind of gonna, it's been a little while since we've done some of this, so I'm gonna ask Mr. Seacrest regarding motions for type of action and lead agency and the seeker review. Is that, is that done after? That's not after the public?
I would do, do that after the public, if that happens to speak, yes.
Okay, so then I would like to move to open the public hearing on seventy-seven Pine Street for a use variance. Could I get a second for that motion?
Second.
All in favor of?
Hi.
I also want to note at this time that I believe I see Marina Resonetti here.
Yes, I'm here.
Good to have you here. So we got everybody. And Marina's been here since the applicant started speaking for the record. So Tito, would you want to give the phone number out for folks to call in if they're listening in?
Yes, if somebody wants to call in, they can call six zero seven 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 two seven zero two eight. Also, if you are an attendee present, you can raise your hand and we will give you permission to speak. I see that we have one attendee raising their hand now, so we'll go ahead and allow them to speak.
Absolutely.
Ms. Staples, you can speak now if you'd like.
Hi, my name is Kathy Staples. I live at seventy-nine Pine Street. So you can imagine that I'm slightly concerned about a wing of a very large building being put into a very narrow lot right next to my house. Now, my understanding is that it's three stories, which there isn't any building on the street that exists that's more than two stories because it's residential neighborhood. That's why we live there and that's why our kids grow up there. So in this residential neighborhood that I live in and I'm buying my house and I want to stay in Binghamton and I'm gonna have a balcony next door to my bedroom, if I'm looking at the plans correctly, that the second floor line between seventy-seven and seventy-nine, I guess maybe second and third floor get a balcony. So does that mean third floor can water my flowers for me? Um, we had a public comment meeting months ago about the stadium district. And a lot of my neighbors and myself went down and we spoke and we listened and we had ideas for this project. Well, we're not necessarily inclined to want our neighborhood turned into a shopping area because we do live here. We did have input and we did like want to be a part of the process. But it seems like after that meeting and what we're now seeing is that our thoughts and comments and input was completely ignored. And we said repeatedly that the residents of Pine Street were one of the few low-income, like residential streets left. We've, the city has managed to push most low-income into housing projects. And so we said we need housing for family, that people in the city are screaming they need housing for families, that we have a huge unhoused population. And the response is we get one-bedroom apartments. There's a disconnect somewhere, like the people that live here and pay taxes and, you know, even if we rent, we still pay taxes because we're paying the mortgage for the person that owns the building. And I feel like we're just being ignored. And, you know, whoever lives in that second and third floor, you know, maybe you can water my flowers. Or, you know, make sure my dogs are sit behaving in my yard because you're gonna look into my yard. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate your comments. Have we gotten any, have we gotten any calls, Tito?
No calls yet. We did just get an email, which I will read now.
Okay, thank you.
Can you guys hear me clearly?
I can hear you clearly.
Okay. This is from Ann and James Clune. We live at eighty-nine Pine. We have a lot of trouble with snow and cars needing to park on alternate side of the street in the winter months. We're concerned about adding twelve units on our block if there won't be twelve parking places off the street for the inhabitants. We also are concerned for families with children having a serious problem with finding housing in Binghamton. It bothers us to think only three of the twelve units would be suitable for families, even if the prices are kept low enough. Please don't use this property to begin crowding out for our families sincerely, Ann and James Clune.
Okay, thank you, Tito.
We don't have any calls yet and challenging to check the attendees.
I don't know who's got the pictures, but could you bring up that picture of the vacant lot, which is seventy-seven Pine Street?
It's in the staff report. So this is sort of a before picture. Right now, it's currently got a chain link fence and construction materials, but this is before it was a staging site.
Yep, I'm, I'm just, I just want to see it there to kind of get a perspective of what a three or four-story building is gonna look like in that setting.
We're not seeing your screen, Tito. Well, we're seeing your screen, but not the one with that picture on it. There you go.
That's the one. So the White House we see there, is that seventy-nine?
Yes.
And then seventy-five is on the other side?
Seventy-five and a half.
Seventy-five and a half. Is that like, that's like a two-family?
Seventy-five and a half is a five-unit.
Two-story? Yeah, two with, two with an attic. Looks like. Okay, now I'm just trying to picture a three-story building fitting in there. Question for the applicant. Is, is, is the building gonna fill most of that space? Is there gonna be any separation or fencing or anything like that between the properties in this area?
There's a ten-foot setback to the east, which would be to the property line between the, the development and seventy-nine Pine Street, the white building on the right hand of the picture that you're looking at. So we have a ten-foot setback there. The other side is gonna be a little bit tighter than that. Again, these are rough because they're still kind of sighting thing.
I'm just trying to get a, a feel for what we're looking at.
Yeah, and, and I should point, the, the other thing I, I just want to point out just for clarification, the, the balcony Ms. Staples referred to in her comments is, is that's just the first floor for, for emergency egress. That's not a balcony that'll appear on the other levels. So on the floor plan, it's second level because it's first floor on Pine Street will be the second level of the building because of the grade change between pine and Henry.
Right.
So that's just a grade level porch.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to visualize.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, I apologize for keep referring to the Peak Skill project, but the Peak Skill project was the pardon the expression, was the guinea pig here, where, where we came up with this model. We had a neighbor immediately to the left and we were in a split zone almost. And the neighbor had a two-story house and we were building much larger structure than, than their house. And we were able to, you know, accommodate them as part of our approval process. We agreed to the board, the planning board at the time, I don't think it was the zoning board, I think it was the planning board, had us agree to certain fencing and certain landscaping and and the neighbor is, is there. I, I was there probably three, four weeks ago and they're still waving to me. So it's a good sign, but you know, I, I understand the, the, the concern. But if the board were to grant the variance with the condition that we had to do something to mitigate whatever they felt would be appropriate, it's something that's not whatever they felt would be appropriate. It's something that's not foreign to us or unusual. Thank you. And one more thing on, on the unit, on the unit. Sean and I have different models and we built, you know, three-bedroom units. What we have found in this case here, we have twenty-two two-bedrooms, twenty-two two-bedrooms, and they will be for families. We also have a number of people in the one-bedrooms that have one child as well. One bedroom can still fit two or three people. But we have also found, you know, that this model and for downtowns, we, we've developed projects that have the three bedrooms or, or in aren't on Main Street, if you will. So, but I, I feel that we have a nice balance here. Out of sixty-five units, we have twenty-two two-bedrooms. We have a playground. There's a playground that will be in the, of the courtyard area. In addition to that, we also have a program where our, the artist tenants, we encourage them and we set up out of our management fund, we fund programs so that they can encourage the non, the school, the children, whether they're from a household with a artistic background or not, we encourage our artists, tenants to work with the children after school. We have an onsite community room and we supplement that with some funds ongoing. So you will have children here, but it's not a large family project. That's a different model. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, my point there was looking at how you interact with your neighbors and whether it's fencing or some other accommodation. You've answered my question that, that you do look into those, those interactions. And it seems favorably based on your interaction with people that are still there. Thank you.
I have a question for the applicant and I apologize if I missed this at the outset. Has any plan, since this is part of a larger project, including more than seventy-seven Pine Street, has any part of this plan been considered without seventy-seven Pine Street or perhaps using that, that lot as parking instead? Has that been considered at all?
It was. Everything is, we looked at many different options. We have, we've looked at that and it's just, we feel that the way this lays out is very consistent with our model. Our model that's been successful in, this is a very competitive funding that we must, that we must compete for. And so we're trying to stay within the lines of the, of the model that, that we've been successful with. And this, this type of layout is not something that is foreign to us, as I mentioned, you know, in Peekskill. But yes, we, we did look at that and the conclusion is, as Dom stated, is those two off-street, off-site lots will be used for parking and this be used for the nine units.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, we have someone that would like to speak. Um, we're just going to give them.
Sure, let him, let him have, have a minute or two or.
Okay, Eric, you should be able to speak now.
Okay, hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Hi, my name is Eric Leonard. I'm at eighty-one Pine Street, so I'm directly next to Kathy, who I think spoke earlier. And I apologize if some of these questions have been addressed earlier, but I think my biggest concerns with the proposed documents I've seen and the proposed site layout are, um, where is parking going to be for these people?
Um, the applicant did address that they have a couple of properties that are not adjacent, but very close by. That one they stated was, I think off of Chapman, one was on Henry that they're going to be using. Some of that is still to be negotiated, I believe.
Okay. And I think my, my other two biggest concerns, I know personally, my biggest concern is this is going to be through, or four to five stories tall, correct, the structure?
I think it's called three-story, but I think the, you do have a utility space, three usable stories. Is that right, guys?
Three, three stories above grade on Pine Street.
Okay.
It's four stories on Henry.
Okay, gotcha. So my biggest concern with that is that with three feet of building in that lot, you're basically going to throw my entire roof into shadow, which makes my solar panels, you know, not make energy. So that's a really big concern for me. I've done the solar calculations on that and I'm more than happy to have you guys do that or check my math on that, but that's a big concern for me. And I think the other big concern is that with a three-foot building like that, I think that kind of gets rid of or severely reduces the privacy a lot of, a lot of the adjacent lots. I mean, that's going to basically render my backyard as public, publicly viewable property as well as Ms. Staples' property and some of the other properties, which I think is something that's definitely a concern to the residents in the area.
Well, some of that can be addressed with fencing, some of it cannot. But I do hear, I do hear your concern.
Yeah, I mean, my lot's already fenced in on all sides, so I don't think any additional fencing is going to stop someone above me from looking down in.
Right. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, that's it for now.
Okay, well, thank you for, for your comments. We appreciate them. Uh, Tito, do we have anyone else?
We do not.
Okay. Members of the board, did you come up with any other questions while, while we were chatting here?
Yeah, right now I've just been listening, you're writing stuff down. So when I do get questions, it could be the next meeting.
Okay. At this point, my question here is to Mr. Seacrest. Is there any farther we can go tonight?
I believe that you should probably open it up for one more request for calls. If no one lets you talk to you in the next minute or so, you could probably proceed with declaring the type of project. I think that's pretty clear, like the secret type.
Yep.
But I don't believe you can make a resolution on that or the overall variance. But I believe the purpose of this meeting wasn't an opening to the public, was it that there was anything concerns that were raised that you believe the applicant could address by next month's meeting? Now would be a good time to let them know this, this has concerns or this concerns us. You should try to address this.
Yeah, I think we've already kind of meeting clear from discussion and from the people that have spoken that.
To address this, the last speaker, they may want to do some rendering or drop drawings or calculations showing we don't have an elevation from that side. So maybe having an elevation from that side towards seventy-nine would not be a bad thing to include in their submission next month.
Right.
Because right now what's showing on Chakman is for, but perhaps down on seventy-nine, it's only three because of the elevation changes. And I think that'd be something that visually, and if you could put what it looks like with that house, what the sun is like and how, whether it will, is three stories going to block the sunlight two blocks over or two, two lots over? That's something that the, the board should look into and should ask for that information.
Right. And when, whether or not it cuts in, what, what part of the day does it cut into? Does it affect ten percent of the available daylight? What, what, what is the actual impact? Would be interesting to know. I know trees have an effect. It depends on the age of your solar panels. There's a lot of variables involved in, in solar power. But as far as the neighborhood goes, there are a few things for you to, for you to think about between now and next, and next month's meeting. Tito, could you read the phone number again for anybody who happens to be lurking out there?
Number six zero seven 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 two seven zero two eight.
And then just still raise their hand if they want to join through Zoom.
All right, thank you very much. Is Eric's hand still up or is that?
It is. I don't know. He just has not lowered it.
I don't think I can lower it.
Do you want to give him the floor again?
If he's interested in speaking, then sure.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it won't let me put the hand down on my.
That's what I was wondering. Okay, thanks, Eric.
No problem.
Yes, I'd seen the coverage on this, a little bit of the coverage on this, on the local evening news within the last week or so. And I was, I was wondering if and when we would hear anything from this. And my question has been answered. I'm pretty sure it was on our agenda too.
I have a question. Was this development specifically raised at that meeting that was mentioned by one of the attendees? Do we have that information? I'd be curious to know what the other residents in the area thought, if we have any sort of record of that.
Uh, what she was referring to was the stadium district master plan, which was a neighborhood plan for this area that, that those public meetings happened last year before this project was conceived. I will say that this type of development aesthetically was, was one of the housing types that was seen as preferred in the district. Whether or not it was preferred on Pine Street necessarily, you know, I'm not necessarily sure, but it, this was one of the preferred housing types in, in the zoning district, so, in the stadium district. So this would be in conformance, generally speaking, with, with the stadium district plan.
Thank Kathy.
Kelly, if you'd like to allow Ms. Staples to speak again, she's, has her hand raised.
Absolutely.
I just had a question. I didn't know if you could answer it or not. In the news stories that were presented, like, you know, Fox and WB and the city's press release talked about the building just being on Henry Street. Do we happen to know why they didn't mention in those same stories that it was also going to be on Pine Street? And why, when I asked the reporter, he had no idea what I was talking about?
I, I would, my, my response would be only, I guess, it's probably registered as a business address for just on Henry Street, but applicant, can you enlighten us?
No, I, the majority of the building is on Henry Street. And so, but the building itself, the building plan is, hasn't changed since, since that announcement.
That, that was a city press release. My guess would be just that it, the, the project is oriented towards Henry Street and so it's called the Henry Street Project.
Yeah, we've had a number of other projects that, uh, the footprint of the building or buildings have gone on multiple streets, so it's not unusual.
Yeah, I understand that part. We did, you know, I now have a fire station across the street from my house that wasn't there before when I moved in. And those were residential lots across the street from my house too. So it just sort of gives the impression that the city might be more interested in making Pine Street into a business district instead of allowing the residents who live there and pay to live there to remain there.
And I think that's, I think that's a really good point too, to, to go on Kathy's comment there is that, you know, in this proposal, we're getting the back end of a building and on the, the fire station, we got the back end of a building. It feels like the streets neighboring our streets are getting the nice things and we're getting the utility rooms, the vents, all the crap parts.
I, I, I hear your comments. I'm pretty sure the, from the visuals I'm looking at, it's, you're not going to be able to tell the difference. It's, it's, all sides of the building are going to look similar. It's going to be very narrow on the street side, but it's going to look very much like the rest of the building. So I don't know, I, other, how other to describe it, but I, I understand your, I understand your concerns. Tito, did we get any other calls?
We don't. And so at this point, I think if you just let the applicant know if you'd like any additional information or, you know, any sort of feedback that, that would be helpful to them before the next meeting, you can, you can let them know.
Okay, all right. Well, we're not going to close the public hearing, but I will make a couple of motions before we table this or vote to table. I'd like to make a motion that this, this action is an unlisted action and that zoning board be the lead agency for seeker. Could I get a second for those two motions? Could I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's some, just accounting or administrative stuff that we have to do to, to be complete on our process. The next steps for, for us are going to be looking at seeker after we get full feedback from the county. The county is going to respond. Yeah, applicant, you will see the, you'll, you should get the feedback from the county on the two thirty-nine, their, their assessment of the project. They will, they will either have no issues or some issues or they will recommend us to vote for or against based on their determination of how they view the property and the impacts of this variance. So be prepared for what they may say. Once, once we have their decision in hand, we will be able to deliberate. When we do get together next month, I would anticipate that we will reopen or pick this up at the point where we have tabled this, should we successfully table this today and continue from there. Members of the public, if things have changed, you'll have an opportunity to speak. The applicant will have an opportunity to present anything that they have changed, that has changed in their, their opinions or to respond to items from the two thirty-nine report. Anything else before we have a motion on tabling this? While, while public hearing is, or public debate is open? Okay, then I will make a motion to table the application for seventy-seven Pine Street, a use variance for the construction of a three-story multiple-unit dwelling, twelve units in the R one, R, R two, one and two unit dwelling district. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that is tabled until next month. We will pick it up there. Any concerns from the applicant before we move on?
Mr. Chairman, do you have the, the date of the October meeting?
Uh, Tito, do you know what that's going to be?
Uh, one second, let me just double check.
It'll be, it'll be the first Monday in October.
Yeah, I just want to double check that there are no holidays or anything that are going to.
Is it going to be in person? Or hybrid or something?
Only Kathy Hokel knows.
Give me your phone number. I'll call her up.
Uh, October third.
October third, five fifteen. Can we have this, would you guys prefer to be first on the agenda?
That would be great.
Can we put them first?
Yeah, we will. Any returning cases always get first, first, the first spot.
Very good.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if, if we could, as Dom mentioned, we, we wanted to get the use variance in front of the board for consideration first. We have some other variances on, on the three lots and possibly this lot as well. We'll probably incorporate them into the application for, for October and, you know, we'll uh, get some feedback and see, respond to some of the comments and get some feedback from. Respond to some of the comments and get some feedback from the board and we look forward to seeing everybody October third. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, if you have any area variances that arise between now and then, get your applications in as soon as you can. And if it's appropriate, we can get them seen at the same time.
All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you. See you next month.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.
And do we have any other business, Tito?
We do not, other than to welcome our, our newest member, Sue Bucci, to the board.
Hello.
Yes, Sue, welcome to our happy band.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
Sometimes we're more busy. Tito tends to take it relatively easy on us in the summertime. The fall and the spring seem to, to bring us a lot of business.
Good.
So we look forward to it. I don't know if you've looked at this, there's some online trainings that are available for zoning board and planning board kind of. Activities and there's probably some in-person ones starting back up, but I think Tito and/or the, anybody, some other folks in the planning department may have information for you there.
Okay, great. Thanks. I did go back and read. The agenda for every meeting last year, just so I could get a general idea.
Very good.
Of what, what you all have been doing, so I wouldn't be totally out in the field, so I will follow up on that. Thank you.
I did send you Sue also trainings for, from the Department of State. For board meetings and ethics and secret stuff like that. Always send that if, if that didn't go through.
Okay.
Don't we have to get a certain number of hours annually also, Tito?
Yes.
So I would remind the rest of the board members, don't forget to get your continuing ads. All right. If I don't hear any other business, motion to adjourn, can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And that's unanimous. All right. Thank you very much. See you all next week or next month, next week.
Great. Thank you. Bye.
And we just ended, is there like, do you, do you like stop recording, nothing?
No.